Okay, with that, I'll share my screen and bring up tonight's. Agenda. Matt, Bill, Megan in attendance. Hi, Susan. Can you all see the screen? Okay, and the current? Agenda?
Yes.
Right. Thank you. Let me just do a couple of. Dates here so I can still see everybody. Okay. So with that, I'd like to call. Town of Wakefield Planning Board Meeting, October 13th, 2020 to order. Tonight's meeting, we have a few items on the agenda, and as you can see, we're still under the open meeting laws banning gatherings more than 10 people. So we are. Virtual, nobody that I know of is in town hall. But hopefully someday we'll be back there. Looking forward to that. Items, let's see, approval of meeting minutes. I did send out. I think three months, three different meetings for Bill and Matt to review. That was late this afternoon, so. They'll get a chance to review that and we can discuss in the next meeting. Unless there are any questions on the meeting minutes. I don't know, Bill and Matt, did you get a chance to review those?
I haven't had a chance to. I just got home from work a short time.
I understood.
I will read through them.
Yep, thank you. And we have an order here. Item number three is public hearing zoning text change. Item number four, plan endorsement for Wildwood defensive plan. Item five, 14, Montreal schooling. And then some item six, not anticipated, and then any action items. So let's start off with item number three, public hearing zoning change, text change, section 190-4B. Adding definitions in section 190-31, adding new paragraph L. The way I'd like to do this this evening is to have Attorney McGrail. Present the text and go over any comments. I know this is. The public hearing is really important for us. I need to stress this. I can't stress this enough. That as a board, we are, we are so in tune and really need the participation from the town to help us understand more about the opinions and that of the townspeople. So. Hopefully, there's a bunch of people in attendance tonight that can add their opinions. Attorney McGrail, we'd like to start with you going over whatever you need to for the new paragraph L. And then the board, Matt, Bill, Megan, and I can add some comments if any and questions, and then we'll move to public comments and questions. Brian?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, members of the public, for the record, Attorney Brian McGrail, I'm representing. The Savings Bank, who is an owner of a piece, a number of properties that could be affected. By what is being proposed and they are, as an owner, a sponsor of this article, along with a number of citizens. For the record, I do represent the bank and some of the other sponsors. I am not a sponsor of this article. I'm just presenting it on behalf of the bank because of my knowledge of the zoning bylaw. With me tonight is Robert Di Bella, who's on the screen. Bob is the president and CEO of the Savings Bank. Savings Bank is familiar. We're coming before your board. We've been here a number of times going back to last year. We've gone over that how important the Savings Bank is to the community at large and what a model corporate citizen they are. And really, a such a valuable corporate entity to our community as a whole. They're embedded in the fabric of our community. They were, they were founded here in 1869, believe it or not. I think we all know they're very humble, the way they go about their business and continual, continue to contribute to various philanthropic. And charitable associations throughout the town and supporting as many organizations as they can. As I've said before, the good news to the town of Wakefield is that the Savings Bank wants to stay in Wakefield. Although they do have a number of branches in other communities. Their main branch in their home office is right on Main Street. They think you're familiar that their main branch is at 357. And they also have the Oddfellows Building, which is connected to them at 347 Main Street. The bank recently purchased property at 3 Chestnut Street, which I'll get into as I go through the presentation. And one of their goals is to incorporate this into that property into their campus as a whole. I think the board is aware, I know the board is aware that we were before you. Not too long ago, going back to the spring, when we were proposing bylaw changes, two. One was a zoning map amendment to clean up some zoning district line between the business and general residence. Zoning districts. The Savings Bank was the owner of one of the properties affected, and there were other properties affected. We went through a number of hearings with your board on that, and your board supported that article at town meeting in June, and it passed. And then the Savings Bank proposed another article, which is very important, was very important to them. To be able to facilitate what they'd like to do to their property. And they also, at that time, presented evidence and testimony from other banks in town, in particular, the Wakefield Cooperative Bank. In support of that bylaw change. Because they might be able to utilize that in an effort for them to reasonably expand their, their building and to be able to stay in town because they're a longstanding. Entity in East Boston Savings Bank also piped in. On, on their desire. And so your board supported that, and it went to town meeting. And it did not pass. It got a majority vote, but it did not get the required two vote. I'm sorry, the required two thirds vote. And so we learned from that town meeting. Because, you know, that town meeting was what it was supposed to be. There was despite COVID-19, there was great participation. There was good discussion on that article that was proposed. There was some criticism of the article. In particular, you may remember that people spoke about the fact that they were, you know, they had no problem with the bank. But they were concerned that it was broad and included, you know, maybe all financial institutions except for banks and in offices. And there was a concern that it was too broad, but the consistent theme at that town meeting was, you know, that there was a desire to support the bank and their efforts in other banks in downtown. So. You know, why not tighten up the bylaw and address these concerns and bring it back? So we listened, we learned, and that's exactly what we did. And then, and so we, we tightened up the bylaw to address what we thought were the concerns that were raised at town meeting, and I'll get into that momentarily. We actually had two public meetings before your board. To discuss what was raised at town meeting and how the bylaw could be improved to address those concerns. I also reached out specifically to two of the folks that vigorously participated at town meeting and were critical of the bylaw. And I must say, they were kind enough, and I appreciate it very much, to, to welcome me and to review it, discuss it, tweak it. And, and I was able to actually get their feedback on what's being proposed tonight, and I very much appreciate them doing that. And I think, you know, as you said, Mr. Chair, at the beginning, the more discussion you have, the better, the better it is, because, you know, you can't see or think of everything. So with that said, we are, we are here to present this. I think it will be familiar to your board because you kind of participated in some discussions before we filed it with the, with the town council. I think before I do that, if I could have the screen, is that possible, Mr. Chair? But you're on mute.
Yep, I mean. Muted now. There we go. So multiple participants can share. See if you have ability now to share.
I do.
Awesome.
Great, thank you.
Something I learned last week. To do this, okay.
So. This is, this is what was presented at town meeting. So it says Article 24, but this really dealt with the map, but I just want to give the board, and I think the board, I know there's new members, so I want to make sure that I just don't take for granted that folks know what's happening here. So I think we should start from scratch. The property you're looking at, the brick building is the back of the Savings Bank on Chestnut Street. So if you came out that door and took a left, you'd be on Main Street. And the Hartson Building is at 3 Chestnut Street. And that's the building that the, that's the property that the Savings Bank purchased. That's where the funky zoning line was that went through that property that has now been fixed by the June town meeting. In the foreground, you'll see the taller brick building, which is the Oddfellows Building, which is part of that campus. So. Now, in essence, the Savings Bank owns the Oddfellows Building, which is number 347, the main branch 357. And then the Hartson Building, which is 3 Chestnut Street. And what they desire to do is they desire to raise this building and put what we believe is a very tasteful, modest, and reasonable addition onto their building. This kind of gives you a. Perspective on Main Street. So this is the campus, the Oddfellows Building, connected to the main branch. The main branch already goes back a little bit, and then the way back that you kind of see a little bit of a. Shadow, if you will, of the, of the Hartson Building. So this gives you an idea, and this is just an idea because. What we're, you know, if, if we're fortunate enough to have this pass by town meeting. It has to go before the zoning board of appeals, and it will get a full review. And, you know, I think we all know they spend a lot of time on architecture, et cetera. And it will have a site plan review through the board of appeals because it would, it would still need some special permit relief. So it's not just like, say, passes a town meeting and this can be built. But this is just a sample rendering that our architect put together to kind of give, again, your board and the community as a whole, an idea of what they're doing. Unfortunately, the way the bylaws written now, they can't do it. They would need multiple variances in order to do that. And that's the purpose of this bylaw for banks that we're trying to. We're trying to incorporate to make it more flexible for the banks. You know, we had discussed. When we, before you, in the spring, in the town meeting, that banks are under, under siege. Because, you know, some of our downtown type banks, a lot of the lifestyle developments, like a Market Street. Are having, you know, banks like a Capital One move in, and they have the cafe, and they have. You know, these expansive lobby areas with where customers can sit and socialize and, 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 and basically transact in a very comfortable. Environment with bank personnel. And, you know, we feel that this bylaw is going to give some flexibility to allow our banks to continue to compete. With what's being proposed kind of on the outskirts of the downtown area. So I think I have to stop sharing this to now share something else. So this, Mr. Chair, is the bylaw that we vetted and we're proposing. And as I mentioned, the, the last bylaw that was proposed did a couple of things. It actually allowed the relief to apply to financial institutions and business offices, professional offices. And it really. You know, basically. It was, it was, it was pretty broad, and the way it started out. Was it was kind of unlimiting to districts, and that was a concern that was raised. We addressed that a little bit with a town planner. But that was discussed at town meeting. So what we've done now is we've created in a way, and I will say that town council has had an opportunity to review this also. It was shared with him after it was drafted and, you know, for him to, you know, he never gives an opinion on what he thinks, but just as far as the. The wording and the solidity and the function of the bylaw. So what this does is it actually creates a definition for a bank, because that's what we're going to limit this relief to. And it defines a bank as a financial institution authorized, licensed, or chartered by the state or federal government. That maintains depository accounts, accounts for customers, accepts deposits, pays withdrawals, clears or cashes checks, pays interest, makes loans. In addition, may provide other financial related services to its customers. So now we've got a definition of a bank, which our bylaw was lacking. You know, it just kind of. It kind of bundled it into, you know, an assumption that it was a financial institution. Financial institutions, when you look those up, could be insurance companies, could be fidelity, it could be a number of, of different type entities that would be. Not qualified as what you would think of as a bank. So now we have a good, solid definition of the bank. And then we've, so then we also create another definition of a bank building. And we define a bank building as a building solely occupied or used as a bank. And the reason we did that, to give some background, that it's solely occupied by the bank, because some of the folks that gave some testimony on the way it was originally drafted said, well, gee, what if you did a mixed use building? You know, you could put a real small bank in and then get this relief for, you know, another type of building. Or another type of use. So we limited it. We said solely occupied by a bank. Nothing mixed with it. And then we said staffed by personnel, because that was another concern that came up that, gee. You know, what if you just put an ATM in there and, you know, with no personnel? So now it's not what we would think of as a bank. And so we, we said, you know, it had to be staffed. And it has to be where customers may visit and conduct business in person and interact with personnel. Including areas within the bank, such as lobby areas, taller areas, automatic teller machine areas, conference rooms. And customer lounge areas, which we talked about, along with areas that are exclusive to personnel, such as safer storage areas, personnel offices, personnel work areas, personnel conference rooms. And other personnel related facilities, such as a cafeteria. So we've really, I think, boxed it in pretty, pretty nicely, that it's, you know, the only. Thing that can get relief under this bylaw by special permit would be a bank building and nothing, nothing mixed with it. And. You still see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, hold on, I'm just having a little problem here. Okay, there we go. And then what we do is, so those would be definitions that are created under 194, 4B, which aren't there now. And then. What we're doing is we're mending 19031 by adding 19031L, which, which was. Similar to what happened before, but not exact, because now it's much more limiting. And what we say here is the board of appeals may allow reductions indoor increases to the floor area ratio. And let me explain what that is. So floor area ratio for a building means that if you have, say, a 10,000 square foot lot. In a business district, the floor area ratio was 1.5. So that means the, the biggest building that you can have is floor area of 15,000 square feet. It's impossible for banks to pretty much meet that in the downtown. The Savings Bank, as it is today, doesn't meet the floor area ratio. Let alone putting on condition. Because there are, you know, a lot of areas in a bank, like lobby areas, some of these customer congregation areas that take up a lot of area and a lot of floor, floor space, but. In, in a not compact. So floor area ratio is the first thing. That, that we could seek relief in the board of appeals. Maximum building coverage is another. Because, and I'm going to bring these tables up once I read this. So I'll go through it quickly. Minimum open area. And front yard setback requirements of table two. For a bank building, so it can only be for a bank building by special permit in the business district. Now we've got it's only in the business district. Any such reductions? Indoor increases shall be supported by evidence of lack of suitable land or design considerations or other similar factors. The board of appeals must also find that the granting of such, said special permit will not adversely affect the health, safety, convenience, character, or welfare of the neighborhood, what to see what the town will do about it. So. And I think this was Mr. Lowry's idea. To kind of, because we presented this before. To have a table. I think this is kind of helpful because it really shows. What we, you know, what is required in a business district and what relief that this bylaw would allow to have, have, happen, again, for bank buildings only. So this is the table that, that the bank would be able to get relief from. Again, as you see the highlight, it's only in the business district. What's interesting is lot area in our business district, there is no minimum lot area. So when you're downtown, like you could, you know, single residence 12,000. You know, industrial 20,000, the business district, there is no area. So you can have a small lot as you want. There's no requirement. Maximum density. There's, there is no maximum density. There's a footnote as it relates to multifamily, which isn't applicable to a bank building. There's a frontage requirement and width requirement of 40 feet. We're not looking for, you know, there's no allowed relief for that, you know, not looking to like create ridiculously narrow type lots. So there's no, you know, most of the lots in the business district would have that 40 feet. All the banks do. So we're not looking for any relief of that. The next thing that we are, as I've mentioned, is floor area ratio. Okay, and I went through that. And then one of the things I said is front setback. And what's interesting here is you look at it and you say. Gee, you know, you really don't need a front setback because none's required. But if you go to the height requirement, and let me try to blow this up if I, if I can figure that out. What do I do, Mr. Chair? Do I double click or I?
I think if you hold down control and roll your mouse forward.
Thank you. Oh, great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so now you can, you can see it better. So in the maximum height is this. Footnote eight. So the maximum height in the business district is 60 feet. To give you an idea, the, the Oddfellows Building is 54 feet. We're not looking for relief on that. We're not looking for any, anybody to be, go higher than what is allowed by right. But this footnote aid is interesting. It says, if you go to footnote eight, buildings over 50 feet shall provide a front yard setback of five feet plus one foot. For each foot of height in excess of 50 feet. So if you take the Oddfellows Building, which is right on the property line, it's right out to the sidewalk, it's 54 feet. So that would have to have five feet plus. Another four for the four feet in excess over 50 for a total of nine feet. Really, it can't be done in the business districts for the max, and it really wouldn't, as the town planner used to say, you know, he's enjoying retirement now, but you don't want a building in downtown that's set back nine feet from the sidewalk, and you'd want to create that street state anyways. So that's why we've asked for the ability for front yard setback because of that footnote. The maximum building coverage is 80%. We're looking for relief from that because. The Savings Bank and the Cooperative Bank are already over that, let alone if they, if they put a little addition on like the Savings Bank is doing. The minimum area is 10%, and basically, nobody meets that in the downtown because all the lots are pretty much fully developed. So, so basically, what we've got is we've got floor area ratio. We've got front setback, we've got maximum building coverage and minimum open area. And I hope that helps because I think it's, it really kind of highlights what, you know, what we're asking for. There to, you know, what type of relief to be available. You know, we think it's a good bylaw. I think everybody now kind of probably senses how important it is to the Savings Bank because they're back here again. For a second try. We did listen. And, you know, I think, you know, I'm just gonna, I'd like to read a letter that the chamber sent back in March as it relates to the efforts of the Savings Bank. When they supported the Savings Bank at that point on, on the changes that were proposed. And, you know, the changes are somewhat consistent. So I think the, the letter is still in play, and it says. These changes will support financial institutions in downtown Wakefield and encourage them to stay and prosper in their current locations. Financial institutions are a very important part of our downtown by providing key services to our citizens and local businesses. They are also an anchor by bringing clientele and pedestrian traffic downtown, which, once they are taking care of their financial needs, often frequent other businesses. As members of the chamber, our local financial institutions are also tremendous corporate citizens. They provide continual support, financial and otherwise, to an endless number of community-based organizations. With competitive financial institutions beginning, beginning to open and surrounding lifestyle developments in malls, which directly compete with our downtown, it is important that it's a time we adjust our zoning. To meet the needs of Wakefield's financial institutions so that they can continue to address the needs of their customers and employees who are remaining in downtown Wakefield for the long term benefit. So, you know, that's how, you know, the chamber, I think, feels about the Savings Bank, which is a key member and the desire to make them comfortable and make them be able to service us. As a community, because we all need that in our downtown area. I hope that lays it out. I do want to thank the board because, you know, the board spent so much time on these things, you know, back in the spring, and now with this again, and you were courteous enough to give us. Two meetings to talk about this, and we really appreciate your time and the effort that you put behind this, too. So. We're happy to take any, any questions or comments, obviously, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Attorney McGrail. And as always, it's a, it's very thorough and good presentation. I'm so glad that you took the time to. Blow up the table two and add the highlighted sections to it because it is tough to read and confusing. So that does help a lot. I know. From my experience working with you and the Savings Bank for this and reviewing back and forth. This does seem like the wording is so much tighter. Especially with the. The definitions as a bank and a bank building. And I know, looking at. Paragraph L, I'm sure you went over many, many different versions of paragraph L. And I think if, if we could focus on, if the board could focus on any questions that could help move this along, so we could get to the. Public participation part. It doesn't look like there's too many people here that might participate, which is why we do have two meetings to do this. But if, if any, anybody on the board, Matt, Bill, Megan, if you have any comments or questions for Attorney McGrail or Mr. Di Bella, that would be great if you want to share.
I don't have any questions at this point. I, I think. The changes that were made are going to help out. This does answer some of the. The questions that were brought up with the, at the last town meeting about some of the issues that could come, come about. So. I think at this point, that's looking pretty good.
Bill, do you have any comments? You're on mute, Bill. You're good.
No, I don't have any comments, but it is tightened up a lot, and I think it's, it's pretty good. The way it's been presented. From the last time, I think he answered a lot of the questions that I were wondering about.
Excellent. Thank you. Megan, any comments or questions?
I do have a question, and it's more of a process question than on the wording. But you mentioned that multiple variants would need to be approved versus getting the special permit. Which would this, which this would entail? Is there anything that you can just explain, like the approximate timeframe of getting the multiple variants approved versus getting a special permit approved? What the difference in the time, approximate timeframe might be between those two processes?
Happy to. May I, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Great. So the timeframe is for, for. It usually depends on, you know, any, when this goes before the board of appeals, if it went for special permit of variances, it would probably take the same time. Because they look at all the architectural plans, they tweak it, they look at site plans. So I would say it would probably be anywhere from. I would say it would probably be anywhere from three, probably about three months to four months for either. But the, the main reason for this is really not from a time perspective. It's really the standards that, the, the standards for variants are more difficult. And virtually, I won't say impossible, but extremely difficult if they, even if they're granted to withstand an appeal if a variance is appealed. So what, what that means for the financial institutions like the savings bank is that when they, if they go to, to do this project, you don't just show up at the board with the type of plans that, that we have. They've got to hire a site civil engineer to do all the drainage calculations in all of the, the, you know, boring testing on the, on the lot. They've got to hire an architect to do detail plans, not just what we're showing. So it's not uncommon for an entity to be into it for soft costs of well over 50 to 100,000 before they even file. I mean, a lot of people don't realize that, what goes into these pre, you know, to put the application materials together. So it's very hard for a, a financial institution to say, hey, we're going to do all of that front work and spend that money. And now we've got to go for four variances. And, and, and what if somebody appeals it that just doesn't like us and we end up, you know, and then we spent all that money? So that's really, you know, why, you know, we're, we're saying that the special permit is more appropriate for banks in this limited circumstance and in this limited district.
Okay. That was very helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thanks. And I, I do agree, this is, this is, it has evolved in a very positive way. This is nice to see. And as we move to the public, I wanted to give a chance Attorney McGrath and if Mr. DeBella would like to say anything before we move to public.
Well, I just want to thank the board for allowing us to present again. I, I think the, the job that Brian did in tightening out based on the comments we received from the board as well as the comments at town meeting were very helpful. And I just appreciate the opportunity to be able to present it again. So thank you.
You're welcome. This, that's why we exist. This is, this is a good channel for us to share information and learn from it. So with that, any, any person from the public, if you'd like to add any comments or have any questions, before you do, please state your name and address and we can continue from there. Okay, let's let the record show that there's no comments from the public. And at this time, I know this meeting is being recorded and meeting notes will be posted, but we will, we will, we will also have, let me just make sure I get the date right. Week's a little messed up with the long weekend. So October 27th will be our next planning board meeting and we will go through this process again where Attorney McGrath will explain and present. And if there are any comments from the board and then we'll go to the public. So if you are tuning in via recorded video or watching on WCAT at a later time, please note that October 27th at seven o'clock, this will be one of the first items on our agenda. So thank you. All right. Attorney McGrath, if you could stop sharing your screen.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
That's okay. Unless you have anything to wrap up in closing. Okay. Excellent. So let me share back to the agenda. So next item on tonight's agenda, Attorney McGrath, I believe it's you, plan endorsement, Wildwood definitive subdivision. And for this, where Megan, because it was before your time on the board, you can observe but, and comment, but there's, you don't have any voting or action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This can, I think this can be fairly brief. This is, I just wanted to come before you to, to orchestrate the endorsement of this plan between Paul Reavis retiring and COVID-19. This kind of got lost in the shuffle a little bit. So your board approved this. The appeal period is long gone and we need to get the plans endorsed. So I was wondering if I could do that by the usual avenue of dropping at your house and then circulating.
We can. I just do have one item to discuss and, and I know in the covenant, looking at all the different items, I believe item number 11, I could bring it up if it makes it easier to share.
Oh, that'd be great. You, what are you referring to? The?
I'm referring to the, I could, I thought I could find it on my phone faster, but I have right here. It's item number 11 is the, let's see. It's about involvement of the town engineer and having them an environmental monitor and the estimate on what that would cost. And that was prior to signing.
Thank you for bringing that up. So Bill Renault's preferences that he likes to do that prior to construction because he doesn't know who's going to be building this. So that's really what he's done. I've talked to him about that. And, you know, if that's okay with the board. That's his preference. That's the way you did it with 107 Prospect Street. It was changed to that. And also, I believe, on the property on Osiphe.
I know with 107 Prospect, it has gone well. And that's, that's exactly what Mr. Renault, our town engineer, referenced to. That he would like to work with it the same way as on Prospect Street. And it would go that route with this one as well. So that was the only item that I could find looking through there that I felt was outstanding.
Yeah. The only other, right, there is one other item and, and we're going to do that is the INI money. Before I drop those plans off, I will get a receipt that that's been paid.
Okay.
And I will email that to you and I will not drop those plans off until you have that receipt that the town has received that money.
Okay. Matt or Bill, do you have any comments regarding the Wildwood definitive plan?
No.
Okay. All right, we're good. When do you think?
I would say at this point, you know, I gotta, I gotta have the client go to town hall and, and get to Bill Renault, the town engineer, pay that money. I would say it'd probably be early next week, Mr. Chair, in reality.
Okay.
I'll, I'll send a note to you and Sue when I'm doing that. So you know, she can look for them. And just so you know, there's two sets, there's two Mylar sets because because the town wants one back.
Okay. Was that request from town engineer or?
Yeah.
For a Mylar?
You always like two sets of Mylars. They want one for the registry and one for, one for town hall.
Okay.
And I'll get the town clerk to endorse it before I drop it off to you too. So you can see her endorsement that no appeals were filed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, 14 Montrose School Lane. And I just wanted to say, I did send an email out to the owners. I haven't heard back to the Reeves to check. This is to check just for a quick background. We reviewed Montrose School Lane subdivision, which has a do not disturb, no disturb of the, do not cut down any trees, more or less, in this area between the subdivision lots and the existing lots that surround the subdivision of Montrose School Lane. So we've had some history here with some trees being cut that were not supposed to be and all that. So when the pool went in, we, we wanted to monitor that and understand what's going on. So I've been over there twice. I know Bill, if you want to speak up, you've been there as well. And with no luck of meeting with the homeowners, we, I sent an email out earlier today just to get some, to see where they are in process. Bill, do you have anything to add or comments?
Are you talking to me, Bill?
Yes.
Oh, no, I, no, I couldn't get ahold of anybody either. It looks like I, I saw that they, they had the, the hole covered, you, you know. I saw some tanks and stuff on the side of it. But I, like, like you, I didn't want to walk on to the, the property and I rang the bells a couple of times. I was over there and I couldn't get anybody to.
Right. I did notice the, the required fencing and the fencing that they were proposing to go around the pool is not up yet. So my understanding is the pool is not open or full of water or anything that could be dangerous. So of course, our concern more is with, did any trees get cut down? Was anything else added that would change the drainage or visual or whatever with the abutters? So that's, that's the important part that we're looking for.
What, what else I noticed was they did have a covering over the, the hole that's there and everything. That in itself could be a problem maybe later, you know.
Okay.
With this rain because it's not like covered flat. It's in the hole, you know, and then comes up. So that means it can collect.
Okay. I'll wait to hear from the Reeves and find out where that's at and make an appointment to head over once I hear from them. All right. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Any other comments regarding Matt? Megan? Concerns? All right. Thanks. Moving on, items not anticipated by the chair. I do have two items, but before I get to them, I wanted to see if anybody on the board had any items they wanted to bring up.
Yeah. I do.
I know you do. That's why. Okay.
Yeah. The, the item is I had, when I was over there looking about the pool, I saw Mr. Patty. And he was telling.
Sorry, Bill. Bill, just for the record, the Patties also live in Montrose School Lane and we've had.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Just to, that's why there's a connection here. Go ahead.
Correct. Yes. And I, and I was talking to him for a while and he showed me what he wanted to do because he wanted to grass the area down below, but he wasn't able to because he has to sort of probably get a small bark at in there just to scrape in the boulders and debris that's down there so he can plant the grass. He doesn't want to dig. He doesn't want to remove anything. He just wants to plant grass. He said it would look nicer because the, what I did notice is on the other side of the fence, they planted beautiful grass there now. It looks really great in the other yards right, but right back of him. So I, I think it would be an asset for all of them if he did something like that from what he was explaining to me. Just removing the rocks so he doesn't damage his lawn mower trying to cut the grass and and just spreading the surface out and cleaning the rocks off. That's what I got from him. Maybe you would like to talk to him yourself too.
Well, I, I think as a, sorry, Bill, as a board, I know we can't say yes or no to this. I know in the past, the three abutters have been very vocal and involved with that piece of property because of past experiences with trees being cut down and, and other things. So we need to be very careful and with past experiences, we know that when work was said it was supposed to be done in a certain way, it wasn't. And drainage was changing and different thing that we did not approve. So thank you for being very planning board-like and not telling the Patties they could do one thing or another, but bringing up. So the next, what I will do is I will reach out to the Patties in an email and ask them their intentions and to present a letter with a plan marked, we've been through this before, of the areas that they would like to remove rocks and the area that they would like to plant grass with some pictures. Shouldn't take them more than a half hour to take care of that. I don't think we need to ask for them to have a landscape architect to get involved with this one until we see how far it's going. But I'd like to send that email out to the Patties. Does that sound like a good idea? Bill?
That sounds like a great idea.
Go ahead, Matt. If you.
I'd have to review what our previous plan was and what we agreed to. I don't want to keep modifying something up there. If the, if we've come to an agreement on something, it should be, you know, it should follow through with what we previously agreed upon and not keep chipping away at it slowly. So I'd have, before we do this, I'd want to take a look at what, what we agreed to. So.
I do not have that prepared tonight, but I can, I can send out a message to the board with the latest letter and map and decision. Okay. I, I did look through it this past week after Bill and I spoke about his visit. So yes, we can, I can do that. Does that sound like the right course of action, Matt?
Yeah. I, I don't want to, you know, if we, if they agree to something and we, you know, basically acquiesce to it, I don't want to go start changing things again and since it sets a bad precedent that we can slowly over time erode a decision that's been agreed to with certain parties. So.
Understand. And Megan, and I'll send it obviously to the entire board. Megan, this will help bring you up to speed with some of the history with Montrose School Lane and the Patties. And obviously we'll go to Joanne as well. Okay. Thank you, Bill. Does anybody else have any items not anticipated? Or on our agenda? Okay. Thank you. I, I do have, I do have Patty thing. Okay. And the town council, and I know Jonathan Chines is here. So please chime in if, if you need to on this. So I have it correct. So I received an email from Sherri Dalton. I believe on Friday that the town council this Thursday will be reviewing two other zoning bylaw proposals. They did, they were received before the deadline, I think the day of. So this is going to be a little complicated for us, meaning as a planning board, if town council reviews the bylaw, zoning bylaw proposals, change proposals, as a board, we would then need to advertise 14 days in advance of a public hearing. That will go beyond our next meeting date. And as you know, the first week of November, that Saturday, the seventh, is our town meeting. November, Tuesday, November 3rd is a pretty busy day too with elections. So we cannot hold a meeting on that day, which leaves us with Monday, November 1st. I'm sorry, Monday, November 2nd, as a possible meeting date for our board, have a public hearing to review two zoning bylaw proposals. Mr. Chines, does that sound counsel, does that town council, Chines, does that sound in step with what you know? I can't hear you. I know you're unmuted, but I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. No, that is correct. I, I think from a timing perspective, you know, the, the first opportunity we have to formally refer those to the planning board is, is Thursday's meeting. And, you know, given the timing, I, I think the only date that you probably have that is feasible for that hearing would be the, the November 1st, November 2nd date.
Right. I obviously can't town election and who knows? Right. I obviously can't town election and who knows what will be happening on Wednesday of, Thursday of that week and then moving into town meeting. And I, I just want to push it out to the board. This is unprecedented in my experience with our board to only have one public hearing for a zoning bylaw change. And this is something that we've always opened it up to, it seems like at least two or three where somebody can't make it one night, they can make it the next night. Does anybody have any concern?
Well, Bill.
Before, before Matt, you go into that, as a planning board, if a zoning bylaw proposal for change goes to town meeting, as a board, we recommend unfavorable action or, or not. And if we don't recommend favorable action, I believe it doesn't go to a vote. Trudy McGrill, can you confirm that?
It does.
It does? Okay.
Yeah.
But the, the process is they're going to refer to us at our next planning board meeting, we would set the public hearing date.
Right.
And that would have to be at least 14 days from the time that it's posted. So what's going to happen is they're not going to have enough time to get this on, on town meeting is what it comes down to. So we're not going to, you know, nothing, we're not going to lose any sleep over it. It just came in too late. So there's nothing, you know, it's not going to happen. That's all.
Well, it's, I just want to make sure before we just say it's not going to happen. So if on the 15th, town council refers to the planning board, we get that information the 16th, which is a Friday. And Susan, if you can chime in here with your past experience with adding items, advertisement to the item, if on the 16th.
Bill, at our next, we have to at a public, at one of our regularly scheduled meetings is when we would schedule a date. So we can't, it can't be publicized before we set the public hearing.
Okay, I understand what you're saying because I'm missing a step where on the 27th, we need to set the public hearing date.
Correct. It's got to be at least two weeks after it's posted. So it's, why I'm saying it's not going to happen is just, just not enough time.
Okay. Sorry, I missed that step. I, I, I went through this calendar and the math to see if we could get it to work and I was hoping we could. Okay. I wonder how we.
Yes, just a question. Could you set the, could you set a date for the public hearing at your meeting today? Understanding that nothing's been referred to you yet, but almost as a placeholder in the event that something does get referred to between now and your next meeting. I, I don't know. And that might be a question for town council Mullen. As to whether or not that's feasible, but throw that out there as a potential option in question.
I don't know the answer.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Please.
I represent three of the property owners that would be affected by this purported bylaw. And Mr. Lowery is correct. This is not an agenda item on your, on your, to, to set a public hearing. You have not even had anything referred to your board.
Right.
It's not before you. So that would be going way ahead of yourself. And with all due respect, bending over backwards, the, the precedent of your board has consistently been that when something's referred to you by town council, as Mr. Lowery stated, you set the public hearing at your next meeting. You don't set public hearings for something that hasn't not yet been referred to you. And I have to speak because I do represent three of the property owners. Really, there's only four property owners that would be affected by these, by these purported changes. And I represent three of them that are significant property owners in the town. One, I think probably, you know, precipitated what was filed, but there's two kind of innocent bystanders here that are really upset because, you know, in, in, for, for people to bend over backwards in, you know, for lack of a better term, I guess, you know, stretch break rules or protocol. I just want to go on the record, I have to, that on behalf of my clients, that we would have, we would have significant issue with that.
Thank you. It's just good to know. And in my experience, I haven't run into a situation where we had this much or this tight of a schedule where the, the meeting had to be scheduled, the advertisement had to go out for the public hearing and the date's been set. So it's good to know exactly how that works. So there's no way we can send the advertisement without setting the date because it has to be during one of our scheduled meetings and on our agenda to set that meeting date. Okay. I will send an email to town council, to Mr. Mullen, just to let him know. I, I feel in our responsibility as a board that we should include him in this conversation to let him know what we're doing. I just want to pass that in front of the board to make sure that we all understand that.
You're, you're going to send an email stating what?
That as a board, that there is not enough time between now and town meeting to schedule the two zoning.
Even, you know, the, the process will run out, the, will run its course. I don't think we need to even address this at this point. We haven't, nothing's been referred to us yet.
Okay.
When it's referred to us, then we'll deal with it. But otherwise, we shouldn't waste any time on, on hypotheticals.
Okay.
So that, and that, I mean, that, that's what it comes down to. We're, we're spending too much time on something that, that doesn't really matter at this point. Someone put something in too late. That's not, you know, not our fault. So why spend any extra time on this at this point?
Okay. There, there is one thing I feel about this. We obviously as a board, set the deadline for when the proposal for a zoning bylaw change had to be in a due date. Maybe that's something we can address with town council, that there needs to be more time. Or maybe it's not a set time, but a calendar needs to be referred to, to when the meetings are being set. That way there is enough time. I know it's been a little strange with COVID and town meetings on Saturdays and different things going on. So the schedules have been a little messed up, but I would hate for this to go on again because other people have put their time and effort in to propose a bylaw change. So it, I feel as our we should speak up as a board to town council to how much time we actually need.
It's, it's all, it's all, you know, this is all documented procedure, what needs to be done. So we, I, there's really, with all due respect, there's really nothing more we need to explain. It, it's, the process is stated clearly what needs to be done in, in the timeframes. So.
Yeah. I know, part of me feels like we're unprecedented times and it would be good to, to figure out a, a better solution than having this now wait to the springtime. If anybody else on the board has anything to add.
Bill, I think they just blew the call. I mean, they did it too late. So just like Matt's saying, I think we'll have to just wait.
Well, I don't even know what these proposals are. Again, it was, read this email today. And got back to Sherri to find out what, what was going on with it. Did some looking at the calendar to try to figure out how it could work. So where I feel bad is that this deadline was set unknowing to the people who submitted a bylaw change that that's not enough time for them to get it in. I know that's not our fault. But something I feel bothered by. All right, Megan, do you have any comments or questions?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Your comments.
I just want to say it's not unprecedented. I think at least Mr. Demory and maybe Mr. Lowery was on the board that when, when the assisted living facility was being built, something similar happened. And it wasn't able to get on a town meeting. Am I correct, Matt? Do you remember that? Something was filed late?
Yeah.
I don't believe this was filed late.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I agree. No, it meant the warrant, but, but I'm talking when I say not in time to
Right.
So it was not filed late. You are correct. Thank you for correcting me.
I, right, I just want to be clear about that. They got it in on time. I just.
Well, they got it in time for the warrant.
It's not enough time for our board to set dates and review. And that's where I think to lightly use the word injustice has been done.
Well, and it, it's not our board, it's the process. There's an overall process that we are part of. So we, the board did not do anything and the, the, the town set a time where things to go on, on the warrant, there has to be a deadline.
Right.
They're not saying this is the deadline for zoning issues, you know. If, if, and if that's what it was, the deadline to get something on the warrant would have been two months ago, which would have been unfair to other issues that don't need to have a public hearing before the planning board. So there's, that's, this is just the way the process works. I mean, there's, this, I mean, I don't know what else to say.
No, you're clear, Matt. Thanks. And you've known me long enough to know I'm all about process improvement. So any part that our board can have to help improve the process, to communicate that to the town council, I'm looking at you, Mr. Chines, that we could, we could improve the process for next time.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, maybe if I, if I, if I may.
Please.
You know, I, I think, you know, all of these points are well taken. You know, but I, I do think when the calendar was set for the warrant articles coming in, I mean, I, I'll be perfect to here, at least speaking just for myself. I, I don't think that there was an appreciation for the, the time constraint issues if there were going to be zoning related articles that were, were proposed through citizen petition. And so I, I think that that timing probably wasn't top of mind for, for sort of any of us when we did that vote. I, I think that's a lesson learned for going forward because I, I do think that having the planning board weigh in on these things is really important. I mean, the, you know, the members of this board are the experts on these issues. And I, I think, you know, the hearing that you'd have and the perspective that you'd bring that ultimately would drive a recommendation for or against, you know, any of these proposals, I, I think is really important to town meetings. So you know, hope just from a process standpoint, that as we look at the spring town meeting and going forward, that, you know, this is something that we can get ahead of and address in a, in a better way.
I do. Okay, with that, I don't have any other unanticipated items. I, I guess one comment for the record and Megan, maybe it's more, but that in the, what Trudy McGrill was referring to, the zoning bylaws, Town of Wakefield, that whole zoning table number two is in that book. And I know, I know you asked about what could you get a paper copy of? Did you end up printing it?
Yep.
Good for you. It's, I know, it's, it's, it's nice to have a copy, but it's that table number two comes in handy. Thank you. Any other comments from board?
No.
Bill, good. Megan, Susan, any action items that we need to review?
Not that I know of.
No, I don't think so. I know we have a few. I will be sending an email out to the board, to everybody. Please don't reply back to all. For the, the recent, the most recent agreements with the Patties at Montrose School Lane with plans and some letters. I'll send that out this week. And I'm looking as well at other action items. I think we're pretty good. We'll be waiting to hear from Trudy McGrill next week for Wildwood. And that action will be plans to me, signed, we'll drop them off at Matt's, at Bill's, and we can continue that situation. Okay. All right. So next meeting, we will be reviewing paragraph L again. And besides that item, I, I don't, I can't, I don't anticipate any other items. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Sorry, thank you, Megan. Second. All in favor? Hi. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.